Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this session of Quis-Pam-Sis Town Council for July 15th, 2025. I would like to call this meeting to order. It is 6:01. May I have an approval of the agenda with the addition of the Richie Lake study, please? Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I will move that we approve the agenda with the addition of the Richie Lake study.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote. Motion carried. Whoops, somebody didn't show up. Beth, you were in favor? Okay, so five zero. Please let the record show that Counselors Bigger and Miller are absent this evening and that we will have some guests online virtually. The treaty acknowledgement and moment of reflection, please. Counselor Olson.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quis-Pam-Sis exists on the traditional territory of the Wolus-Tukwic, Malasit, and Mikmaa people, whose ancestors, along with the Pasamagwadi tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the Bridge Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of the traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. I have a few remarks this evening. We are dealing with an extreme heat warning over our region over the next few days. A heat alert has been issued by Environment Canada with temperatures in the 30s feeling more like 40 degrees with the humidex. Please take extra precautions to avoid prolonged exposure to the sun, use sunscreen, stay hydrated, and find a way to stay cool. Our warm weather amenities offer some options, including 97.3, the wave pool at the Qplex, Minens Cove Beach, Gondola Point Beach, and of course, Firefly Splash Pad. Please do not leave anyone in the car, including your loved pets. For more information on staying safe during this heatwave, visit gnb.ca/heat. I'd like to thank everyone who visited the Arts and Culture Park for our 2025 Canada Day celebrations. We had a terrific crowd of all ages enjoying the music, games, and fun. I was very pleased to be joined by Deputy Mayor Schreier, along with Counselors Bigger, Luck, Thompson, and Donovan. And it was wonderful to see our local MLAs, Ministers Erin Kennedy and Alison Townsend, along with our new MP Wayne Long, taking in the festivities. Thank you to the sponsors and to our hardworking staff for making this event so successful. I hope you enjoyed Canada Day as well, and we look forward to other community events in our area. I also want to thank you and the organizers of this year's East Coast Canada Games in our region. Quis-Pam-Sis served as proud host of several swimming, softball, and lacrosse events. I was honored to participate in the opening ceremonies of the girls' softball tournaments at Minens Cove Baseball Field. Congratulations to the hundreds of athletes who took part and to everyone involved in the Games. Mayors from around our region were invited recently to the new Hampton Summit. This is an impressive facility in a beautiful setting. It will be a wonderful addition to the area. And we are getting closer to offering a public transit option in the Kennebec Heights Valley on a trial basis. Over the last few weeks, more than 700 residents of Quis-Pam-Sis and Rosé took our KV Go Demonstration Project Survey, which asked for ideas and preferences for a transit solution in our communities. Staff are analyzing the data, and we'll release more information soon. Thank you to everyone who provided feedback on this exciting opportunity for our region. Our Arts and Culture Park Summer Series of Events are underway for another year. Music, movement, and movies in the park are held each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday respectively throughout July and August. Visit our events calendar at quis-pam-sis.ca for the most up-to-date information. While you're there, subscribe to the calendar to receive weekly updates by email. This evening, we have our local Rock and Roll Cowgirl group, and we will be hearing them shortly as we are meeting. International Mud Day is coming to a location this, to a new location this year. Mud Day is Wednesday, July 23rd, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Parkside Playground off Parkside Road. You can make mud pies, play in the mud pit, or just roll and have some fun. Information can be found on the events calendar at quis-pam-sis.ca. We have updated and modernized the town's community grant program, and we've given it a new name. The Community Investment Program supports individuals, groups, and organizations who contribute to the quality of life of the residents. There are two streams of funding: donations, which are awards of less than $500 for individual support, and grants, which are awards of greater than $500 to support funding of qualifying programs and projects. To be considered for either of these award type, an application must be submitted to the town on or before Friday, August 29th. Applications will be accepted starting tomorrow through our website, quis-pam-sis.ca, on the Applications and Forms page. Hampton Road is set for a major upgrade. This is more than a repaving project. We're rethinking how the street works for everyone: drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, and more. Before we design anything, we need your input. How do you use Hampton Road? What's working? What's not working? What improvements do you want to see? Go to our website, quis-pam-sis.ca, and visit the Have Your Say page. You'll find a link to the Reimagine Hampton Road project website, where you can learn more about the plan, take our survey, and add comments to the interactive map. Congratulations and good luck to Jasmine Lebel of Quis-Pam-Sis and their partner from Frederton, who are in Geneva after qualifying as one of the top 24 teams in the Nelson Mandela World Human Rights Moot Court Competition. The competition invites students from universities worldwide to argue a hypothetical human rights case before judges from leading international tribunals and human rights experts at the United Nations Palace de Nations. The team from St. Thomas University qualified for the in-person competition after advancing through the online preliminary rounds, making St. Thomas University the only Canadian team in Switzerland for the in-person competition, which began on Monday. I also want to congratulate Nick Ritchie of Quis-Pam-Sis on winning his first New Brunswick Men's Amateur Golf Championship in Heartland at the end of June. Nick emerged victorious in a playoff after a four-way tie atop the leaderboard. Well done, Nick. Quis-Pam-Sis is well represented at the 2025 Canada Summer Games in St. John's, Newfoundland, and Labrador, beginning August the 8th. We have over 25 athletes and staff representing our community with Team New Brunswick in a variety of sports. We'd like to, on behalf of council and staff and our residents, wish all our athletes a very successful outcome, so good luck to Team New Brunswick as well. Enjoy the competition, the camaraderie, and the atmosphere of a national sporting event. And don't forget, Quis-Pam-Sis will host some events when the Canada Games come to St. John and Moncton in, in our regions in 2029. Finally, I want to invite all of you to join us in the 2025 New Brunswick Day celebrations on Monday, August the 4th. The party runs from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Arts and Culture Centre. Festivities include music, games, complimentary light refreshments, and a walk and talk with David Goss. There's a free event, this is a free event, and a wonderful way to celebrate our beautiful community and province. I hope to see many of you there. As Quis-Pam-Sis Mayor and Council, I would like to, to express our condolences to one of our former counselors who recently passed away. And, you know, it's always sad when somebody leaves our community and so suddenly. And we, we do recognize that. And Counselor Olson, I'll go to you on that.
Do you'd like to say a couple of words about Gordon?
Yes, Gordon Friars passed away a week ago. And you'll have a celebration of life at the Kennebec Heights Funeral Home on Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00. He's a former counselor. He was very active in the Legion. And peacekeeping, he was in the forces for 27 years and worked with the, worked with the Blueberry Group there. You know, peacekeeping and that, and was very active in our community too, but also nationally and internationally. So he will, he will be missed. He was, he wasn't very old. And he died of, of heart complications, so. Anyway, it can happen to us all, I guess, but he was, he was a good member of our community, and he will be, he will be missed. And his service should be recognized and remembered. So all the best to Gordon's family, and we wish him, we wish them all the best. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Olson. Moving on to item number four, disclosure of interests. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Your Worship, I'll be declaring a disclosure of interest on. I'm just trying, I have to refresh under resolutions. I believe that is under section. Trying to bring it up here. Oh, there it is. 11D.
Thank you. Presentations. Kennebec Heights Regional Joint Board of Police Commissioners Quarterly Update and Q and A on General Police Issues. In attendance, we have Chief Mike Young and Board Chair David, sorry, Kevin Darling. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Your Worship, Deputy Mayor, staff, council members, good evening. So additionally to the town package that was provided to you, I'd like to start with a few quarterly updates. So June 24th, I completed my first three months in the role of Chief of Police. To give you an understanding what those first three months were like, I got a really good understanding of current operations within the organization. I got a good understanding of staff, the members, their wants, needs, and also the needs of the community as well. With that, we begun to focus internally, strengthening our frameworks, processes, workflows that align with policing standards. And once again, that will carry over to service delivery within the communities we serve as well. What this will do will ensure that our daily operations support long-term goals and also support the initiatives we have in place to support the strategic plan and the priorities within the strategic plan. My first week into the organization, line of communication is crucial. I established a line of communication with CAO Ian Watson. We have a very good line of communication. We meet minimum on a monthly basis, but we continually communicate almost themes on a daily basis, keeping in contact and linked on operational needs, requirements, and hot topics within the communities we serve. With that, coming into the organization, we had a vacancy in the community position. That has since been filled. On June 30th, we have filled that position with Community Engagement Sergeant, Sergeant Kelly McIntyre. Kelly McIntyre, what Sergeant McIntyre, what she'll do is boost community contacts, partnerships, also create a proactive response to, to calls and problematic issues within the community. This goes far beyond a public relations role. It's a collaborative role, which any issues within the community, Sergeant McIntyre will go out, work collaboratively with the community on addressing issues as such. With that, she's in the process of preparing a 90-day plan, which is linked to the strategic priorities that fall under the community priorities within our plan. On that, she's also the IPV Coordinator, and will do, continue to do all the quality assurance pieces related to intimate partner violence, which if you refer back to the 2023 Provincial Managerial Review, scored very well within intimate partner violence and all process related to that and our response to IPV-related files. You'll see in the town report, what we've tried to do is create a little more narrative and context to the numbers that you see within the report. Beyond showing the numbers, we're trying to give you the whys and rationale attached to, whether it be decreases or increases in certain areas within the report. Once again, as I've mentioned to those that sit within the Joint Management Police Board, always looking for feedback and open to that. If you have any suggestions or wants in what you'd like to see within that package, feel free to have that feedback travel back through the folks that sit within the Joint Police Board. And we'll be very open to receiving that feedback. That is all I have for the quarterly update additionally to the package you received. I can take questions if you like.
Thank you very much, Chief. Certainly appreciate the work, the quality work that we receive and the protection and that your officers provide to our community. Very proud to see that Sergeant McIntyre has been appointed as the Community Engagement Representative on the force. And having spent some time on the board and getting to know Sergeant McIntyre a little bit, I know that we will be well-served by her in the, in this position. She's a very hard worker and very dedicated to her position as an officer to begin with, so. So thank you for that. And, and certainly, you know, matching the, the operations to support goals, both short-term and long-term, that kind of planning is strategic to running to communities. And I know Mayor Grant certainly appreciates the work that, that, that you provide with the force, and certainly it's appreciated here as well, so. Continued good wishes to you in your new role, and, and again, we're happy to have you.
Thank you for the support.
So if anyone else would like to, I will go to Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks for your report, Chief, and I'd like to congratulate you and the police force on your new building, the addition to the new building, and I just love your little fresh outdoor air lunch table there that, I'm, I'm sure it's open to the general public. They can just go in there and stop and maybe get to know some of the police officers in a different light, but seriously, it, everything looks really nice. And it's nice to see the, the whole area cleaned up and the construction material cleaned up. And the exterior of the building looks just perfect, and it's a facility to be very proud of. So thank you for, for your assistance in working with Mr. Darling there and the board and getting it done. And of course, with Mr. Bob McLaughlin leading the charge there with the construction and home care and home start, they did a super job too. So just a full, full team effort there. So it's a great addition and that, an improvement to the community. So thank you very much for that.
I definitely have to give credit to, I, I was very fortunate coming in on the tail end of that whole project. Thank goodness. Deputy, Deputy Chief Mary Henderson did a fabulous job with, with that as well, did Chief, Chief Gordo and those involved from the board as well. So I get to reap the benefits of that, but definitely a great job by, by all there.
They, they know I meant them, so, you know, but no, thank you again.
Thank you. Counselor Luck, would you like to do that motion?
I mean, I'll make a motion that we thank Chief. Young, thank you. I know that.
I know, I know.
Chief Young for his presentation and thank him for his time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Deputy Mayor.
I'm sorry, I missed the question, so I'm a little late to the party, but I did want to just ask you a sort of a generic question is, what is the most common complaint or concern that you're hearing from our citizens? We don't always hear it, and I know that there's a lot that goes on in the background that a lot of us never know, that there's issues with certain files or something that, you know, we might go, wow, is, we didn't know that about our community or, you know, and I'm not asking about anything, you know, confidential, just like on general, like, you know, in St. John, where they're having some issues as well with addiction, addictions issues. And, you know, we're very familiar with intimate partner violence in, in the valley. And so I'm just wondering, like, it's, it's, everything isn't all rosy in, in, in the valley. And I just, you know, I don't want to be the rain woman today, but I just sort of like to get an idea. Where are we in our, in our world out here?
So obviously, you know, being so close to, to our adjacent city, we don't seem to experience certain things that they do. But looking at the past report that was provided to, to council, you can see there was an increase compared to comparables to last year in intimate partner violence. What is causing that increase? It could be folks are feeling a little more comfortable in our response. So there's a confidence piece there that they're more wanting to, to report those incidents. And I think better education as well. I go back to Sergeant Kelly McIntyre, who's very active within the community. She's not just doing the quality assurance on, on file work, she's also doing proactive education as well that starts right at the, the youth level in relation to IPV-related matters. So when you look at the intimate partner violent piece, that's, that's something that we're going to keep our eye on out here. Obviously, with, with any community, traffic is always, you know, the traffic complaints and the noise complaints. That's, that's a common issue that a lot of communities have. But looking back at that last report, the IPV-related files is what we're going to pay attention to especially. You'll notice there was a decrease in a lot of those other areas, which I think just directed patrol-related strategic patrolling has decreased, you know, public mischief, breaks, thefts, just a little more police presence were being seen. So I think that is causing that decrease in those areas as well.
Thank you. Saying no other comments or questions. It's been moved by Counselor Luck and seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. That we thank you, Chief, and Mr. Darling, thank you for being here this evening. And thank you to all of the board members, including Counselor Luck and Counselor Bigger, for their work with the Board of Commissioners on the Police Board. So thank you for all the work you do in protecting our communities. Please vote.
So I won't be here till fall on my next visit. Please all have a safe and happy summer. All right.
Thank you. Same to you. Thank you. Motion carried, five zero. Item 5B, Facility Allocation Policy. Final What We Heard Report Presentation from Creative, from Forward Creative, Mary Ellen McLough. Virtual attendance, so you can see Mary Ellen on your screen. Welcome, Mary Ellen.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Your Worship.
And I think your name is pronounced McLuff?
McLuff.
McLuff. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's important. So welcome. You may begin with your findings, and then we'll have time after for council to comment or make, or have questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having me this evening, Your Worship, deputies, council, and staff. I'm looking forward to giving an update this evening. I have to apologize in advance that I have a bad cough. So you may hear me drop out, mute myself just for a couple of moments while I cough and then come back around. But I'll start off by sharing my screen here. Can you just let me know if you're able to see that?
Yes, we are. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. So as we continue to go through this process, I thought it would be a great moment to update council on what we've heard from community. This has been a very interesting engagement process for us. We've had really an astounding amount of community engagement from the town of Quis-Pam-Sis residents as they look to see what the future of recreation looks like in terms of the allocation of different spaces. We've engaged in multiple different ways, so I'm going to go straight into this slide, actually. So as many of you have heard me maybe mention already to date, we've done a variety of different engagement approaches for this, including a community webinar. Excuse me, where we had about 74 participants. And we had presentations here in council chambers. We initiated a survey, both online and in paper. Our online survey, of course, having the most uptake, but receiving around 712 responses. For a town of this size, that is very, very good. And I think it really speaks to how engaged the community is in recreation and how that's a part of the fabric of your community. That definitely came through. Um, that definitely came through in survey responses and in our direct consultations. Um, so we spoke, um, with each of, um, the counselors and, and mayor. Um, we spoke with town staff, uh, eight in total. Um, cross-departmental, so both in rec as well as, uh, as well as other staff members. Um, and we also met with a variety of different community organizations that, that we estimate, um, based on, um, lists of players and so on and so forth, represent approximately two thousand five hundred community members. Um, so when we look at community engagement, um, this is one that we look at as quite successful. Um, sometimes we have, uh, a lower turnout, but this one, um, community really was, was eager and ready. Uh, what some of the things we really noticed were, uh, community members coming to their means with us with printouts and, and presentations. And they were ready, uh, to speak about recreation and how important it is to them. So I think that's something that the town should feel extremely proud of. Um, because as we know, that contributes to such a significant amount of wellbeing. So I'm going to go through some of the key themes. I'm actually going to go back to my second slide here, just to give you a sense of where we are at right now. Um, so we finished engagement and we've, we've created the What We Heard Report. Um, you should have those within your packages. And that What We Heard Report dives into the details, um, quite a bit more than what I'm going to give today. But today I'm going to give a high-level overview, um, for those that maybe don't want to dig too deep into that long document, but also, um, somehow having it verbal can really help kind of wrap your head around all that's in there. Uh, so, uh, looking forward to kind of going through that today. Um, we've begun drafting the policy already. Um, so the policy will be ready, um, likely for the next, um, council vote. Uh, and at that point in time, um, we'll talk about what that looks like next in terms of implementation. So we're going to go over some of the key themes that we heard. Um, and of course, we've placed these into quotes, but that's not to say they're direct quotations from residents, but more so summaries representing what we've heard in conversation. And key theme number one that we really heard quite a bit is that the current process doesn't feel fair. Um, it can feel like some groups get first dips, but the reason for that, nobody really knows why. And I think it's important to highlight here that it's not that residents mistrust staff. It's that they're not so confident in the internal process that leads to the allocation of the, of the facilities. Um, and so really what residents stress they want to he, feel is that it is, it is fair. And fair can mean different things to different people. Um, but point number two being, whenever we expressed that fair may mean some rotation, some sharing of prime time, most were quite open to that. Um, I think most people would love to continue to have their time, but they also know that as a town grows, as population grows, um, there has to be room for other people to enjoy recreation facilities. And, and most, most people, if not all, were very, very, um, warm to that concept. Um, we also heard that we don't want more, uh, that we want more visibility into where we are being allocated and when more bookings become available. So sometimes that looks like, um, you know, some more transparency in what the final schedule looks like, so that they can see where in the schedule they fall. Um, sometimes that can look like reallocation as well. So if a group is not using their spot, that there's a, that there's a policy in place there for how that gets reallocated to the next group. As we know, um, we have a set number of facilities. So when we look at things like reallocation, we really start to look at optimization to make sure that everybody gets a chance to play. Within this report, we've got, um, some, some suggestions and, or some, um, approaches that we're going to be considering as we draft the final policy. Um, and, and some of those are looking at how the schedules really do align with real-life availability. So of course, as we heard, we can't put kids on ice at five in the morning. Um, but likewise, seniors don't necessarily want to, um, skate at, at, at eleven P M. Um, so it's really looking at residents and, and the, the, the user groups and understanding, how can we make sure that what we're allocating makes sense for their lives? Um, there's a number of other points here. I'm not going to go through each of them on every slide. You should have it within your package. Um, but what we're, what we really want to, um, drive home on this is that a fair and consistent process that prioritizes the kids and youth development is key. That is, um, a specific quote that we had from a survey respondent, but it's also very representative of what we heard from community members, even community members that are not necessarily representing groups that are related to children. Um, and so we really do hear from community that fairness, consistency and youth, um, are, are very key priorities. Our second point is around consistency and transparency. So as you can see, there's a common thread as we move through, um, through this presentation. Um, but really, um, right now, what residents are feeling is that they don't know who gets priority or why. Um, and again, it's not to say that, um, this is any fault of staff. It's more so looking at, is there a policy in place that we can really rely on to say, okay, that makes sense? And, and that's, that's the rules, uh, kind of like the rules of the game. Um, we need that document to fall back on. So if anything, I believe that really speaks to having the policy in the first place. Um, and so it was, it was astute to, to do this even prior to having this community engagement, to, to validate that this was a, a process that community really did want. We also heard that some people are finding it's not fair when people overstay or take extra time without booking. Um, so again, this goes back to, um, going back to the policy and, and how is time, um, allocated? And also what requires booking and what doesn't, uh, because we'll get into that a little later as well. Um, we hear that staff and, and, and generally, I mean, it's assumed that folks don't want to be down on, on courts or on ice, um, patrolling. But really what we want is a system that people can look back at and say, okay, that makes sense why they have that, uh, that period of time. And it's not about playing favorites. It's about everyone knowing the rules and that the rules are actually being followed. Again, really strong community buy-in for having these rules, for having a policy and being ready to follow it is something that we hear from everyone as well. So again, a lot of this speaks to having, um, that published allocation policy. Um, and, and also making sure that we, we look at it across how spaces, um, allocated, including things like subletting or informal sharing of bookings. If a booking is made by a group, it should be the expectation that that group is using it. And if not, it should be allowed, um, for the town to decide what is the next priority in terms of who's going to use that facility next. Um, it also, transparency also looks like flooding. When does flooding happen? Who's paying for flooding? And having just some standardization across that, um, start and end times and some of the simple rules that, that we would want to see that, that folks are looking to, to have so that it is consistent across different groups. Um, some of it relies back to historical usage, but having, having that new policy and everybody on board and, and genuinely, people do seem quite on board is, um, going to create that foundation for transparency and consistency. Um, as we can see, forty-eight percent of respondents identified that the lack of available time slots is their biggest barrier to access. Um, so when we look at barriers to access, we look at things like accessibility of the spaces, um, which we did hear a little bit about, but vast majority of accessibility concerns have already been rectified. Really what residents are facing most, most of all is, is just gaining access to the spaces. Um, and, and having some of that consistency and transparency can also contribute to, to folks understanding why maybe at that particular point in time, it's not their opportunity, but that they do have opportunities at other moments as well. As we know, as with busy families and, and different life priorities, we all have, um, have different things that come up in our schedule that we need to, to, to plan around. So having this schedule and the policy behind it will, will help with that for families and, and, and different user groups. The other thing that we heard is around access for all Quispanzis residents. Um, so this is, uh, important when we start thinking about residents that are using the facilities that aren't necessarily on a team or a league, but they want to play or walk or use courts without having to be part of something organized. Um, and so this speaks to having sort of those open ice times, um, community access to courts. And really, uh, slices of, of, of time where residents can access, whether or not they're in those groups or signed up for something or not. It's that informal ability to say, I'm going to go out in my community and access recreation. Um, and there's a variety of different ways that they can do that in Quispanzis. So really getting into a sense of when is, when are those moments? And when are those the ideal moments for public use? Um, so, uh, that was, that was something that we heard quite significantly. Um, and, and another thing that we heard is around families, um, not necessarily knowing how to get started, uh, where to sign up, what it costs, what they need. Um, so this is particularly, uh, often something that we hear, um, for newcomers. So it's about having some strong communications around the new policy, um, around how folks can get engaged will be something that, that we would definitely recommend um, as, as we start to unfold some changes to recreation. Um, and the other thing is that we need time slots that actually work for families and working people. So if, if folks are working or even if it's folks that do shift work, how do we have a schedule that balances all these different priorities and community needs? And that's the challenge we'll be looking at. Um, but we have some, some great concepts already drafted up, um, for this as well. So, uh, without, uh, without any fear, I think we're going to be in a very good place to allow access, uh, for all Quispanzis residents in the way that suits them best. The, the one piece that we do really want to highlight here is around the mental health component. Um, we heard this quite significantly, especially when we look at, um, seniors, especially when we look at adults, um, of all ages, uh, and youth, having that access to, to, um, to recreation really is a key contributor to, to having, um, uh, a quality of life and, and physical and mental wellbeing. And, and folks really know that. So sometimes when they're having some hesitation or, or concern around what this change might look like for them, that's a big topic that comes up is, is just how significant, um, accessing recreation is important. And, uh, and we're very, um, very confident that the policy that we, that we put forward in our, in our future conversation, um, will really consider that and ensure that we have, um, access for all, uh, in the model in a way that works for them. Community social wellbeing is another theme that we heard quite significantly. Um, it's not just about sport. It's about where we meet people and feel part of something. And sometimes that's watching the Vito's game, uh, whether that's a, a safe place for teens to congregate and, and watch something, um, that feels community, uh, oriented. And parents feel confident that they're in a safe place. Um, or whether that's, you know, people feeling that they have a family in their team, um, or their pickup, their pickup hockey. There's so much that people feel, um, from a community social wellbeing when it comes to recreation in Quispanzis. And I think that's part of why we had such great turnout, is that people really do look at this as a piece of their community and a significant driver for what they love about Quispanzis. Um, so we also heard that for newcomers, um, that, that joining a league is sometimes how they start to feel at home. Um, and so starting to build those community connections can really happen in recreation in a beautiful way. And it also gives kids, as I said, a safe space to be after school. Um, so i- it's, it's interesting to be doing this after hearing from the chief of, uh, police, but I think that it sounds like Quispanzis is a very safe community. And I would not be, I do not think it's far-fetched to think that recreation potentially plays a role in how safe of a community, um, you've built. And so when we look at social wellbeing, that's, that's a piece of that, uh, building a, building a beautiful community. Um, recreation supports youth safety, inclusion and mental health. It falls, fosters community and multi-generational, generational connection. Um, and welcomes and engages newcomers and, and more. Uh, it brings people together. And that's what people really were emphasizing when they met with us. So as we start to kind of build out this policy, we also keep in mind how important it is to have those gathering times, whether they be formal or informal, looking at that fabric of the culture of Quispanzis inside of this policy and the history, um, that has led to recreation being so significant in Quispanzis is, is all something, uh, are all facets of what we'll, what we're taking into consideration as we build this. Um, lastly, uh, this is not one that, uh, technically relates to the allocation policy specifically, but I think it, we would be amiss if we didn't mention it, um, because we did significantly hear it both in in-person conversations as well as, um, in surveys. And that's that residents want more facilities. Um, a lot of folks are interested in an indoor pool. And of course, um, as we know, uh, Quispanzis does contribute to the St. John, uh, Indoor Aquatic Center. Um, but at the same time, there are many folks that are still, um, wishing for that to be something that Quispanzis does have. Um, ice time as well, um, having additional rinks, uh, as we've had conversations. Um, you know, it's, it's always that balancing act of, of wanting more space, but also having them be viable for the community to operate and, and continue to run. Um, but nonetheless, folks are definitely, um, speaking that they would like more ice time. Um, and then the other one that was interesting was having an indoor field house or a gym space. Um, so having opportunity to play games like basketball, volleyball, um, and so on and so forth, uh, indoors during, during the winter, um, was something that folks were quite interested in. So I do, I do want to mention that, of course, this exercise that we've been engaged in is not around creating new recreational facilities. It's about making sure that we've optimized the recreational facilities that are there. Um, and I think what will, residents will start to feel, um, as they, although we can't necessarily create a, a, an indoor pool, I think once we start to have, uh, better understanding and transparency around scheduling, um, folks will start to realize that there may be enough ice time there. Um, it's just about, uh, optimizing how we schedule it. Um, and likewise, I think we always want better for our community. We always look bigger. And I think that's a good thing, uh, to have residents thinking about how we can continue to grow Quispanzis. And whether or not that's something in the near future or in the long-term plan, um, you know, having that in mind that recreation is a significant source of community for Quispanzis. And, and looking at facilities and, and continuously doing so every few years would be something that we would definitely recommend from, from what we've heard from this. Um, one interesting thing that I would like to highlight, um, around access to aquatic facilities, um, is just an interesting point that we heard was around sensory-friendly hours. Um, so some folks, um, may be familiar with this at your local grocery store, um, but sometimes having that opportunity to access a quiet, uh, space, um, can be more accessible to folks with a variety of different disabilities. And I always just like to highlight sometimes community comes with these great ideas that probably aren't too challenging to implement. Um, and so, uh, so we always like to flag those. And when we do the final, um, recreational allocation policy, we will have, uh, um, uh, great ideas or a field of dreams, as we like to call it, uh, where we, uh, hear from residents and, and the different things that, that could be done. But, um, I, I found that quite an interesting one around the aquatic, the aquatic access, that, that could be something worth considering outside of the scope of, uh, recreational allocation. Two things that we've learned, um, as we've gone through this process, just one. Apologies for my cough. Um, two, two important factors that, that we recommend the town of Quispanzis looks at is that the implementation of this policy, because it is a policy that's grounded in community voice and equity, it may not be the simplest to implement for staff in terms of having kind of a, a manual process that it goes through, especially when we think about things like reallocation and how are we making sure we go through that, that decision tree of, of who is the next person, um, that would be, be a priority for accessing the space. Um, and so one of the things we're recommending is that the town does look at the current technology being used, um, which is PerfectMind, uh, to determine if it's effective for, uh, a more complex policy that has kind of multi-tiered, um, access priorities. Um, and then also if, if PerfectMind cannot kind of investigating, is there a technology solution here that can alleviate this for, for staff? So it's not too heavy of a burden for them to lift. Um, and at the same time, it will allow them to really have that policy that is centered in community. And in addition to that, the other piece that we hear is around the pricing strategy. Um, so it's loud and clear that residents want, um, very affordable, um, access to recreation facilities. And we also heard about, um, accessibility for, uh, maybe low-income families or newcomers or folks that may have a more, uh, constrained budget in accessing, um, recreation facilities. And so while we can kind of make some recommendations around pricing for-profit, nonprofit and so on and so forth, what we identified while we were going through the facilities is that, um, there is a potentially under, under, um, underutilized opportunity to really dig into, um, sponsorship and how sponsorship can drive, um, revenue for the facilities and allow them to be facilities that don't create, um, too significant of a tax burden, but at the same time, don't defer the operational, um, costing to, um, to community members. And so when we look at a, at a pricing strategy, we look at all different forms of revenue, even unique forms of revenue, um, like attracting, um, opportunities to come and host events, for example, um, in Quispanzis. And, and really how we can align those with community needs to have long-term service delivery that doesn't really, um, have too much financial strain on, on the town itself. Um, so always looking at balancing, you know, our resources, our feasibility, uh, and combining those two when we work on our policies. So these are just two, uh, important considerations that we flagged, um, that we flagged as part of this process. So where do we go from here? So of course, So of course, we're, we're sharing what we heard report today. And in your packages, you would have a more detail that goes into demographics, survey responses and so on and so forth. Um, but giving the high level today, um, and then our next meeting, we'll be sharing the, the draft policy um, for, for review. Um, and then uh, from there, we can look at whether the town does decide to go with technology and pricing strategies or if we work towards staff training on how they will uh, sort of manually begin implementing, influencing the process uh, going forward. And so all of that to say, that's our update. I appreciate you having me once more uh, to share this and bearing through my cough and I'm happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. That was uh, very comprehensive and uh, you did a, a great job. Knowing that you had this bad cough, so uh, thank you for pushing through. Uh, certainly we appreciate it and, and uh, I'd like to say that as a growing community, part of our success is also part of our challenge. Because as we grow, it also means that the expectation is that we are going to have more amenities and facilities and so forth in order to accommodate our growing population. So sometimes that is a challenge, um, and we cannot be all things to all people. And we can't deliver everything that, that uh, we would like to be able to deliver. But this gives us uh, some footing for how we are going to move forward. It gives us a baseline now that we can look at this report, uh, at this policy and say, this is the fairness that we have discovered through a third-party uh, intervention, if you like. And uh, and, and in moving forward, um, I'm going to ask now if any council have any comments or questions for you. And again, thank you for the report. Uh, councilors, are there any of you who would like to speak? Deputy Mayor Schreier?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for your report. It's a, it's a big one. There's a lot there. But I, I did, um, my ears perked up, um, with your reference to the police chief. When um, you know, I believe that our town over the years, we've evolved, but we have always had very strong recreational facilities, programming for our residents. And I, I, I believe exactly what he said, that had, has a strong um, reflection on their report is what we've been doing in recreation. So hats off to um, Ms. Dana Perton Dixon and her team that, who never stopped making sure, trying to juggle everything and try to get the ice time. And I mean, I've been around this table since ninety-nine and took a little bit of a break, but ice time was a concern back then in ninety-nine, so things, what stays the same, so it is always the same. But anyway, that's not quite how the old saying goes. But um, anyway, my question was, um, I was really curious to know about how um, we have, our demographics are more to the aging fifty-five or fifty-plus. Like, I can't remember what the exact figure is, but we are an aging population in Quizpansas. However, we have this really vibrant youthful attitude and young families and, but our demographics don't balance out y- young families versus seniors. So I'm wondering, I, it sounded to me like it was coming strong and clear that it was all about the youth. And I'm really happy about that because good habits start young and go through, with you through your life. And so that's a real plus for our community that they recognize how important that our youth are to have access to um, recreational facilities. And, and I, I appreciate that. My question is about the seniors that are fifty-five plus, the more, uh, more of our population, how are they really feeling? I didn't get a, a good, a really strong vibe and how the senior population is feeling. I know they're big users of the pickleball courts and trails, but uh, you know, what's going on with that demographic? If you could just zoom on that a little bit for me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question. Um, I would definitely say that we, we definitely heard lots from seniors. And I would say a lot of it comes down to um, kind of that mentality around looking towards the future and saying, we know that youth are a part of our future and we need to nourish them and continue to keep them in, in, in sport and, and have these safe opportunities for recreation. Um, but what we also hear at the same time when we speak with seniors is how important the recreation is for them and their social connection. Um, their ability to stay active, their ability to um, feel confident in their bodies as they age. And, and of course, we're always looking for ways that we can continue to help seniors age in place. Um, and so that means a physical activity is a big piece of that. Um, and so when we look at the policy, um, seniors are an important piece of it. And they are definitely a party demographic that we're hearing in addition to, uh, in addition to youth. So I, I want to make sure that that does come, come through clearly that seniors require this recreation, um, not just from a, 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 a point of health, but also from a point of wellbeing um, and connection. And, and we also can see when we have intergenerational connection between kind of those community open access hours where we maybe have seniors and youth interacting in recreation together, um, that we often tend to see really strong outcomes um, uh, with uh, with aging in place. And so it is extremely important as an aging population to keep those things in mind. And the nice thing um, that we do see with, with senior access is that a lot of times it doesn't have to happen at prime time. Um, many seniors are retired um, and can access facilities uh, in the afternoons, on weekdays um, or, or early mornings. Lots of seniors are up earlier, um, don't have to get off to school or work. Um, so can do those kind of early morning spots. Um, and so when we look at uh, senior, senior usage of recreational spaces, we're really looking at what makes the most sense timewise for them. How can we make sure they have those opportunities for intergenerational connection? Um, and also um, making sure that they don't lose uh, lose their space to, to have opportunities to enjoy recreation, which is definitely not in line with access for all. So looking into the policy, we'll have um, some clear, some clear priorities around that, for sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mary Ellen. Uh, anyone else? Have anything further? Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, thank you for the report. I just had one question for Mary Ellen. Um, wondering, I, I can't remember if I brought this up pre, um, when we were just hearing that the, you know, the S- survey was going to happen, but I'm just wondering if you heard any feedback in regards to um, the changes in school use policy. In the past, the schools were kind of a, kind of the location where, you know, it was the hub for a lot of activity. Um, and then I believe within the last probably decade, they changed the policy where you need, you know, it's quite expensive. And I'm just wondering if that came up because it does limit, you know, kind of our ability to offer recreational services because I, I think the schools were um, a big location for a lot of those things in the past. If you could speak to that, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Yes, absolutely. And we did hear about that in a couple of different ways. Um, the, the, the challenges around um, accessing schools has definitely made it more complex for groups, especially um, in the winter, uh, when we look at sports that are, are kind of particularly the ones that are looking at an indoor uh, field house, um, is that they may have traditionally been able to go to the schools and, and have some form of a practice, uh, but unfortunately, that's not, that's not necessarily feasible anymore. Uh, we also saw things like the, the outdoor court um, at one of the schools that was previously an outdoor facility that folks could use is now not very well utilized and, and, and frankly, not utilizable uh, or usable at all, um, as it's now a storage space. So I definitely did hear that uh, that that was a, a challenge and, and many of our teammates did as well. Um, that being said, I think um, you know, as we look at um, neighboring communities as well, I think that that does still pose opportunity to use other indoor recreational facilities. Um, of course, we can only be what we have uh, here in Quizpansas. And so um, looking at spaces like the QMA when it's not ice, um, is a, is an option. But at the same time, uh, I, I do agree that that, that was definitely something that we heard from community in terms of, of uh, just the, the, the volume of recreational spaces that are available and, and that having an impact.
Um, thank, thank you for that. I'm just wondering, because I guess health is provincial. And, you know, we've talked quite a bit already tonight around the importance of recreation and on physical and mental health. Um, and it just seems like there's a bit of a disconnect between provincial decisions in terms of even how the schools are used. And I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity to have a dialogue with our provincial representatives to kind of explore, you know, again, if we're putting a policy in place, I mean, there are some physical spaces that would enhance recreational opportunities in our town. And it seems a little short-sighted by, you know, provincial decision-makers to limit that. And I'm just wondering if there would be any appetite to have those discussions at a provincial level. Because again, at the end of the day, it's going to impact health, which is also a provincial mandate, and so is education. Um, so I think that a lot of that stuff kind of trickles down if you take a step back. And I'm, I guess I just bring that up because I think, um, you know, the schools were almost like a hub in the past for the community. And we've kind of gotten away from that because of different policies that have been put in place. And I think looking back, it would be an interesting discussion to look at the negative impact that some of those policies have had on opportunities for the entire community um, to enjoy enhanced uh, recreation. So I, I don't know if we could potentially have those dialogues just to start the conversation, especially in light of us putting a policy in place. It may be another opportunity to enhance the services that are offered within our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. And, and just on that, I can say that I have met with Minister Claire Johnson and have a rapport with her that this could be something that, and as a former educator and as one who uh, used the gyms frequently in the evenings uh, when they were available for things such as badminton, field areas, floor hockey, basketball and so on with adult groups. Uh, I think it is time that we at least broach the question and, and see if, if we can't expand our offerings. So uh, so certainly I, I don't mind making that connection uh, with Minister Johnson. Are there any other comments? Okay, just one second, please. And there is a motion. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Um, thank you, Your Worship. I'd move that counsel thank Mary Ellen, Mary, Mary Ellen Makloff for, um, from Forward Creative for the presentation and look forward to reviewing the draft facility allocation policy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote. Motion carried five zero. Thank you very much to Mary Ellen, and we look forward to seeing the uh, policy coming forward in August. So thanks very much, Mary Ellen. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you very much for having me.
Good night. Down to item number six, public hearings. There are none. Minutes of the previous meeting, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I'd move that the minutes uh, for the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting be approved as presented.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, please vote. Deputy Mayor, got it? Motion carried five zero. Item eight A, ratification of email poll tender number two zero two five TQ zero five dash nine dash twenty twenty-five drainage improvement projects. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I'd move counsel ratify the email poll of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five and award the drainage improvements tender two oh two five TQ oh five dash nine with an adjusted scope of work to the low bidder Steel Trucking Limited for the bid price of two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents, plus HST. Funding required for the project will come from the existing capital budget of two hundred thousand and relocation of the twenty twenty-five local improvement capital budget of twenty-five thousand dollars and draw from unexpended works, operations, infrastructure budget as required for the approximately five thousand dollars remaining.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote. Motion carried five zero. Item eight B, tender two zero two five TQ zero six dash eleven, Gondola Point Force Main, wastewater pump station number four, staff report from Director of Engineering and Works. Uh, Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I'd move counsel award Gondola Point Force Main Wastewater Pump Station number four, tender two oh two five TQ oh six dash eleven to the low bidder El Sanford and Sons Limited for the total bid price of nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and eleven cents, including HST at fifteen percent.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Motion carried five zero. Item number nine, correspondence. There is none. Item number ten, bylaws. Ten A, proposed bylaw number zero six eight, a bylaw of the municipality of Quizpansas respecting council code of conduct. Staff report from town clerk. Counselor Donovan.
Uh, thank you. I'd move the council direct staff to publish a notice on the website fulfilling the requirements of section fifteen three and fifteen four of the Local Governance Act of, of Code of Conduct bylaw number zero six eight. They receive first and second reading at the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting for consideration of third and final reading at the August nineteenth regular meeting.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to C. O. Watson. Um, uh, again, I'm fine with the motion, but I do have a question, um, and I brought this up in the past. I know the Local Governance Act only requires us to post things on our website, but I'm just wondering if there's any appetite to use social media to, again, because again, the website is something that people have to go to to kind of find, but they have to know it's there versus um, our Facebook page is probably more um, regularly accessed and proactively looked at. So I'm just wondering if there's any appetite to also post it on our Facebook page.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Watson, please.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, through you to Counselor Luck. Uh, what I'd like to do is have opportunity to chat with our communications manager about that, uh, just to make sure that we're not establishing a practice that's difficult to keep up with. Um, but certainly with, with his consent, then I'd be happy to arrange for it. Um, I think for this time, we'd, we'd stick with our existing practice, but can certainly consider it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Motion carried five zero. Item eleven, new business. Eleven A, Gondola Point Park subdivision, phase thirteen A, council ascent. Staff report from Director of Planning and Development. Counselor Olson.
Yes, I'd move that council grant ascent to Gondola Point Park Phase thirteen A subdivision plan, subject to execution of a standard subdivision development agreement. So the plan can be stamped and signed by the town clerk and development officer for registration.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by. Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by, you need a secondary? Uh, Councilor Donovan on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. Unfortunately, I'm having some technical problems here. It's not coming up. Um, uh, yeah, oh, there it is. Okay, great. I, I was wondering about, oh, no, see my text isn't coming up. I was wondering through you to, um, Mr. Colburn, I was wondering about the access on the cane road. It stated that further development wouldn't be considered until the road hooked on to the Means Cove Road. And I, I'm sorry, Mr. Colburn, but my, it's not coming up on my screen. And so I'm just wondering why they couldn't go out the other way, at the other end of Kane and go down and access, um, exit through the Gondola Point Road. So the, they would have two access or two ways to get out right now. They could go down, come down Kane, go right and go down the Gondola Point Road, or they can go left and, uh, go up the Quispam sis road.
Mr. Colburn, please.
Through you, your worship, to the deputy mayor. So that was a condition that was put forward by the Planning Advisory Committee that, um, subsequent to the completion of phase thirteen, provided any more approvals or considerations of phases beyond this one. They, they want to see action with respect to providing, uh, more direct access to that particular area. We recognize there is alternate access into that particular area. If you go down through Sheraton, hit Matthews down to Gondola Point. But when you actually look at the traffic flows through that area, most of the people are leaving that area trying to get to the Gondola Point arterial or Quispam sis road. So by simply pushing them down Sheraton and going Matthews and around, it's still, you're still not getting the quickest access. What we're trying to do is provide an alternate access to capture the traffic as we're coming off Means Cove. So around the coming Means Cove, Quispam sis road up to the cane, they could simply go Means Cove up into that particular area. So we're trying to, trying to reduce the amount of traffic in that particular area, not just on Quispam sis road, but also through the local streets. So you're essentially still pushing traffic through local streets to get to a collector, which is in Gondola Point Road. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's been moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by Councilor Donovan on the question. Please vote. It's going offline. Your favor, Deputy Mayor? Yes. Motion carried five zero. Item eleven B, Country View Estates subdivision, phase six B, council assent. Staff report from Director of Planning and Development. Hello, would you please identify yourself for the clerk? Thank you. Go ahead. You, you can take the mic.
Oh, thank you. Uh, just like to thank everyone, uh, for the time today. And, uh, this would be, uh, opening up eleven more lots, uh, and in the Country View Estates subdivision. Uh, this being phase B. Uh, phase A, uh, had previously existed, um, we started last fall. Uh, we've already closed five houses, uh, to another two pre-sold and, uh, fourteen of them, uh, other lots sold or earmarked to another developer. Uh, essentially, we can frame a house every two weeks, uh, but we'll finish a house every three weeks. Uh, so that strategic partnership helps us develop the land, uh, at an efficient pace.
Thank you. I will turn over now to, uh, Mr. Colburn, please.
Um, through you, your worship. So, yeah, this is, uh, just a request of council, council assent, as is required on the Community Planning Act for the development officer and town clerk can stamp for registration. I think I've covered pretty much everything in my, uh, staff report. I did want to highlight, I did make reference to the town has received some concerns from Full Year Drive residents. Unfortunately, there were some impacts in terms of the, during the initial construction phases and then with some of the clearing of the trees. Uh, I think what's happening was you had a higher, an increase in density of single residential lots that are sewer service, which means basically three to one when you're compared to, uh, onsite sewage drill, one acre lots. So obviously, there's a little more, uh, sort of clearing to accommodate the, the density, which probably had some impacts in terms of the, the trees and, and unfortunately, some of the trees were, had fallen and, uh, but the developer has been working, uh, with the property owners to remediate some of that as well as town staff. So, uh, I think those things are, are being addressed as we move forward. As with any of these situations, there are some learning experiences and opportunities which we've noted, and, uh, we will make, uh, appropriate corrections and adjustments within our bylaws and regulations and specs to, uh, to address those issues moving forward. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Deputy Mayor, please.
Uh, thank you. Um, my question is, um, when you're going up Squire, like Schreier, but it's Squire. When you're going up Squire, is it to the left? Do I go left on Squire? Take, I was up there today and looked for the cul-de-sac. So I go left on Squire? That's that first little cul-de-sac I saw?
Phase A is taking a left onto Pioneer down off of Squire. And then phase B would be going up the hill on your right.
And we're doing phase A today, the left?
We have been working on phase A, and then this would be, you know, with, with the lag of registration, would be opening up, uh, phase B.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we've worked very quickly through.
So I just wanted to be clear, we're, what we're approving tonight, phase B?
Yes, correct.
Uh, on the left-hand side going up?
On the right-hand side going up Squire, taking a right up the hill.
I saw that, that, that's just a pad right now.
Correct.
Yes, okay, okay.
All of the, uh, as Dwight had noted, all the infrastructure has already been, is completed. Uh, and this would just allow us to register the subdivision, subdivide lots and, uh, proceed with construction.
And, and I do have another question, but it might be more directed at Mr. Colburn than yourself. And it's regarding Squire Drive being now being the, um, going from a residential street to what we call a collector road. And, um, I'm wondering with that new designation with Squire, does that impede the opportunities for them to have traffic calming on that road?
Mr. Colburn, please.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, your worship, to the deputy mayor. So, um, as it's sort of indicated in my staff report, with the levels of development, when we look at Squire Drive, first one was, uh, constructed and the initial developments in that area, they were all one acre lots. Once the sanitary sewer sewage infrastructure went in to support the Kingsway Care Facility, that got expanded and extended, which allowed the development of Country View at a, uh, slightly more dense. So you got into the single-family residential sewer service. Um, that has been the bulk of the development in that particular area, uh, over the past, I guess, couple of decades. And, uh, so what we've seen now is there's connection of Squire all the way through Full Year. So, and we were seeing that, that Squire Drive will be obviously sort of that minor collector feeding into the, the local streets, uh, the Kingsways and, um, Pioneers and those types of things all the way over Full Year. So what's been identified is that there obviously will be a need to revisit the level of traffics, which we, level of traffic, which we continue to monitor to, to determine what upgrades may be necessary moving forward. When we did the transportation master plan, that particular street was noted as, in moving forward, as a potential for that to fall under sort of a minor collector, which is similar to what we see in terms of the Queensberry, um, Gondola Boulevards. Uh, so we would be looking at when we move forward, what, uh, upgrades to the street may be necessary in terms of traffic calming, um, providing me- measures for, uh, safe and efficient movement of pedestrians along there as well. Uh, with respect to the request for traffic calming and, and, uh, from the residents, that is obviously open to them. We have the traffic calming policy by which they can make requests to council, and then we would evaluate and put in measures accordingly. Um, so that is currently available. But I think the important part is that this street was recognized as true, the transportation master plan is moving from that sort of local street, which initially started out to the Collector Street. And there are provisions within our transportation master plan that have, to identify what that cross-section should look like with options. So it's on the radar. Um, this particular development, the developer has started sort of laying out some of those feeder elements into there in terms of sidewalks and those types of things, which obviously would, we would, uh, align with and, and blend in as we move forward. Thank you, worship.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Uh, do I understand that, uh, and I'm going to direct this to Mr. Colburn, that the sewer system there, uh, that there is a sewer system that's what is, uh, providing for more houses on these, what were one acre lots? So in looking at the sewer system, does that have capacity for this growth? Because that, that hillside is phenomenal for, for growth over the past, uh, as you say, a couple of decades or so, uh, and, and continuing to grow. So is there capacity for that? And, uh, and I'm sure there's been hydro geological studies done for water availability. Mr. Colburn?
Thank you, worship. Uh, through you to, uh, council and, um, so, yeah, so the development that we're currently seeing is serviced by a gravity line, which essentially goes, uh, across sort of, um, country, down the, down, um, get the streets right here. Yeah, Cobblestone Pioneer, that particular area, the lower portion of Cobblestone, um, and, uh, that particular area is, is serviced into a lift pump, but that was designed for a specific, uh, number of, of, of units. That's been, um, capitalized. So in terms of, what we're seeing today is not actually feeding into that lift pump. It's all gravity service. So that's the benefit of, of that. Uh, we're not looking at, uh, any capacity issues with respect to the wastewater pumping station as this is, uh, everything is, is above, um, that. So you get gravity flow, um, from that particular area, which basically feeds down, the line runs down Kingsway, the lower portion of Kingsway and feeds into the line runs, uh, from the Kingsway Care Center down Carlton underneath the, uh, Route one nineteen. So in terms of capacity, uh, it's, it's there, so.
Thank you. Councilor Luck.
Uh, thank you, worship. Through you to Mr. Colburn. Um, just I echo the mayor's comments around, like, that area is really starting to get developed, which is wonderful. It looks great. Um, and I'm really excited that Full Year will eventually, so I can bypass all the construction on Means Cove. Um, so anyway, it's looking really good. I guess my one question slash concern is the more people build on that side, um, in the mornings trying to, you know, during rush hour, um, I'm seeing and I'm hearing um, more congestion at Hampton Road Palmer Brook. That intersection is becoming very, very scary. I know we've had residents, um, write in in the past with concerns around Elliott and, um, Palmer Brook. The speeds there are, I mean, they're posted at eighty to ninety depending, which means it's a hundred to a hundred and twenty. Um, I'm surprised that there's not more accidents there, just because I tend to use that area and I hold my breath every time I try and turn from Palmer Brook back onto Hampton Road because people are whipping by me on the shoulder. Um, so I just, I guess in terms of like the positive spinoff and the domino effect when we start to build and more and more people are building in that area, and then we start using our roads differently. Are we, do we have that area as kind of on our radar? Because, you know, that's kind of the quickest way to the, um, highway if you're heading west, you know, versus getting on the one nineteen and meandering up with all the other traffic. So I do see more and more people going that way. So I kind of have a worry about no shoulders because I see people walking in. It scares me to death on Model Farm where there is absolutely no shoulder. It's just all gravel, um, as well as the intersection that we've had, um, comments on in the past. So I don't know if anyone can speak to kind of future plans or what's going on there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. Mr. Colburn, and then Mr. Lojic.
Through you, worship. I would defer that one to the Director of Engineering.
Thank you, worship. Uh, through you to Councilor Luck. Um, I think the, the, the mayor will recall the message that we got from DTI a couple of months ago. The designated highway program, the intersection of the Hampton Road and Palmer Brook is, is, was actually our twenty twenty-eight priority, uh, which was not approved by DTI. Um, if you recall, we did the Palmer Brook that goes down to the Elliott. And then our next, uh, designated highway request was the Hampton Road, which is being, which was, uh, pre-approved for next year. And then our following that, the next priority was to continue from the Elliott through the, that intersection to the border with, with, uh, the river, the Hammer River. Um, the proposal that we had made to DTI was that we were going to, and, and again, apologies, this is sort of off the side of the, of the, of the subdivision approval. But it's to, um, it was to realign that intersection, uh, reexamine the speeds in that particular area, um, resurfacing, incorporate whatever pedestrian shoulders that could be approved. So that was our, our ask of DTI that was not approved, uh, for that particular year. We put submissions in, uh, in a three-year, it was a five-year program. They've adjusted it now to a three-year program. We've reiterated that as our priority will be coming forward in September. They request the municipalities' priorities for the following three years. We've adjusted our particular program to continue to make that our number one priority as it go, as we go forward. Um, if, I don't, I don't think DTI watches our YouTube channel. Um, once we finish with the Elliott Road intersection and that slip lane, likely what will have my engineering staff do is reexamine the posted speed limits in that particular area and, and change them under our municipal authority, uh, rather than wait on DTI as part of, part of it. So we'll see, uh, because of the proximity of those intersections, we'll likely see a, a, a corresponding reduction in the speed limits, the posted speed limits of the, from the ninety off of the highway down through to the seventies, uh, maintain a seventy through the intersections instead of the eighties before we, we, we ramp back up again. But, uh, it is a designated highway request that we've seen in our, it's in our radar. Just, unfortunately, it's not in the provincial budget.
Thank you, Mr. Lojic. We have a motion. Councilor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd move the council grant assent to the Country View Estates Phase six B subdivision plan subject to the execution of a subdivision development agreement with the town. So the plan can be stamped by the clerk confirming council assent and approved by the development offer, officer for registration in the provincial land registration system.
Thank you, Councilor Donovan. Moved by Councilor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Deputy Mayor, you didn't have a question, did you?
Nope.
Nope. Thank you. Please vote. Deputy Mayor, you're good. She's good. Yep. Motion carried five zero. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Have a good rest of your evening. Item eleven C. R F P number twenty twenty-five T Q zero six dash ten Cedar Ridge. Supply and installation of play equipment. Uh, staff report from Parks and Facilities Manager. Councilor Olson.
Yes, I'd move that council award R F P number two oh two five T Q zero six dash ten for the supply and installation of play equipment at Cedar Ridge to ABC Recreation, uh, for their bid price of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-five cents, including H S T.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by, uh, by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Uh, she's in favor. Motion carried five zero. Item eleven D, draft U M N B resolutions, open for discussion. And these are coming through Deputy Mayor Schreier. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and I'll, I'm going to address one resolution at a time. The second resolution, I'll, I'll, um, introduce it and then I'll recuse myself from the discussion. So the first, uh, resolution dealing with, um, So the first, uh, resolution dealing with, um, long-term care associ, uh, long-term care beds, it's, um, we are, I want to express that I know as a community and as a province that there's the ongoing concern about the shortage of long-term care beds in our region and the impact that it's having on our healthcare system and especially, um, in the St. John Regional Hospital. As we know, the St. John Regional Hospital serves New Brunswick as the heart center, and it is also the trauma center for the province. And so it's one of the most critical pieces of health infrastructure in the province. And at the present time, uh, I actually, there was a timely article in the paper today stating that the St. John Regional is at ninety-nine percent occupancy and alarming amount and approximately close to thirty-five percent of the beds at the St. John Regional are occupied by alternative level of care. These are individuals who are, are no longer needing hospital care but have nowhere else to go due to the lack of availability of beds or homes for these people. And that's what I would like to stress, that these, these people are waiting to go home to what that home looks like in their reality today. So it's not only a strain on the front care, um, workers that we hear every day, but it's a ba, a barrier to timely surgeries, procedures, and their emergency response, not to mention the barrier for those persons living in hospital at this time. It's a ripple effect that is being felt in our emergency rooms, our operating rooms, and the family, and family homes across our region. It's sort of at a tipping point right now, because it's not only the St. John Regional, and I, I acknowledge that it's happening across our whole province. So I would, um, like to see that as elective of, uh, officials, the, in our community, we hear from families every day and healthcare professionals that, who are doing their best in sort of in possible situations at times. And I'd like to think that it's our responsibility to, to be that voice and to carry that voice to, um, the union of municipalities. Now, that being said, the resolutions have, go from here, and they have to go to the zone meeting and be approved by the zone, and then they would be carried to the union of municipalities at the conference in the fall, and they would decide, um, there would be discussion on this motion and, um, on the resolution, and they would vote. So, um, I would urge you to, um, think about this and, um, support the resolution.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we will vote on the resolution? And Deputy Mayor, uh... Did you put in a motion or, or the resolutions as they stand?
The resolutions as they stand.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. Um, would we have to read this or, like, that's quite lengthy? Do you want me to, whoever's moving it? How are we doing this?
That was why I asked, yes. I, I was thinking the same thing, but go ahead, Counselor Donovan.
I mean, I can read it. It's just my...
So, uh, to support the motion as, or the resolutions as presented by Deputy Mayor?
I would move that we, like, uh, the council of Quis Pam says, uh, support the resolutions as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Uh, it's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Counselor Luck?
Your worship, I just want to thank Deputy Mayor Schreier for bringing this to council. I think it's a critical, um, topic, and, uh, you know, I wholeheartedly support the, the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier? Please vote. She's in favor. Motion carried five zero. Next resolution, Deputy Mayor Schreier?
Uh, yes, your worship. Before the, I introduce this resolution regarding the early learning and childcare, I want to be fully transparent with council and the public, that I do have a, a family member who works in the early learning sector. Um, I would like to recognize that this su, subject matter may be perceived as a conflict by some, but I do maintain full transparency and public trust that I will introduce this resolution and then recuse myself from further discussion on the voting with the council. This resolution is not about any individual provider, but it's about supporting our families, helping parents return to work, and ensuring municipalities that are part of the conversation as the province plans to expand childcare spaces. Prime Minister Mark Carney announced that they would, um, create a hundred thousand new ch, early learning childcare spaces, and I think it's imperative that our voices be heard in New Brunswick, that we need childcare spaces, especially in the greater St. John Region. I do sit on the Community Development Committee for the Fundy Regional Service Commission, and that is one of our pillars in the early childcare sector, that we need to have more spaces in our area. So I trust that council will debate and decide on the resolution and decide if they think it's in the best interest of our community, which I'm sure they will. And with that, I'll recuse myself from the discussions.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As the Deputy Mayor expressed, she does have a family member who is involved in early childhood education, and, uh, she wanted to present this resolution and has decided to remove herself from the discussion. So if there is any discussion, uh, certainly we're happy to listen to it. Uh, Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I would say that, uh, you know, myself, the Deputy Mayor, uh, Counselor Biggar, and Counselor Olson were at FCM in Ottawa, uh, a few months ago. And, uh, you know, one of the common sort of themes that was woven throughout was childcare, um, and the, the lacks, the lack of access and, and just in general, the, you know, the ability for people to actually attain it. Um, so I definitely think it's, you know, it, it's very important. Um, I think, I, you know, I hear, I, it's not only I think, I hear about it consistently. You know, I have people contact me quite often and say that, you know, that childcare is an issue, and I have to try to explain, but it's, you know, as much as I appreciate and understand, it's not as much of a, of a decision on my part as it is the, the part of the provincial government. But, um, you know, excluding that, we do have a duty to take our, take what we hear from our community members and present it to the government, which is what I believe is entailed in this resolution. So, um, you know, I would move that the, the council support the resolution as presented by the Deputy Mayor and, uh, send it to UMNB for further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, Counselor Olson?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. On the question, there are none. Please vote. Uh, motion carried four zero. Uh, could I ask somebody to bring Deputy Mayor Schreier back? Thank you, Tim. Item number twelve, reports. Oops, sorry. Oh, yes. Item number eleven E. Is the Ritchie Lake study. And... We will go to Counselor Olson, please.
Yes, I'd move, uh, the town award RFP two zero two-five TQ oh seven dash twelve. Ritchie Lake Sedimentation and Water Quality Study to fund the engineering for the submitted bid of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars plus HST with the notification who, the native notification also sent to the town's Ritchie Lake Citizens Advisory Committee for their awareness of the project.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question?
And we're, we're, a few of us are struggling to find the... Oh, I see it. I see it. Okay. Great. Yeah, it's, it's very tall. That's fine. Yep.
Deputy Mayor Schreier. So it was moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question? Please vote. Sorry about that bit of confusion. It was something that was added, uh, a little bit later. Deputy Mayor, are you in favor?
I'm in favor, yes.
Yes. Motion carried five zero. Item number twelve, reports. Had an opportunity to look at the reports that are included. Moving on to item number thirteen, business arising from Committee of the Whole Community Investment Fund Policy. Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, worship. I would like to move that whereas the Committee of the Whole, uh, whereas the Committee of the Whole at the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Committee of the Whole Meeting recommended the community investment policy with the discussed amendments be referred to the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five regular meeting for approval and authorize staff to proceed with the implementation of the policy. Be resolved that council approve the community investment fund policy as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier?
No.
Counselor Luck?
Uh, thank you, worship. I just wanted to commend CAO and staff, um, for this community investment fund policy. I think it's a huge improvement, and I think it will serve us well in the future. So thank you very much to the staff and to the CAO for, for taking that on. It was a, a big job, but I think it looks great.
Thank you, Counselor Luck, and, uh, always looking for improvements, uh, or where we can improve. And as I've always said, when we know better, we do better. And the staff is, uh, second to none when it's identified that perhaps a change might make us better and, uh, make the community a better place, then, uh, then they always seem to follow through on those things. So, uh, so thank you for that, Counselor Luck. On the question? Please vote. Motion carried five zero. Item thirteen B. Renewal of legal services contract. That's not coming up online. Oh, I'm sorry. KV Go, uh, I was looking at my paper, and, uh, these have been added since, so. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I would move that council authorize the increase, uh, to the twenty twenty-five budget for the KV Go demonstration project from sixty-two thousand, five hundred to eighty thousand dollars. This additional budget will only be required if the Fundy Regional Service Commission elects not to assist our communities with the KV Go demonstration project. If these additional municipal funds are required, they will be drawn from the twenty twenty-five operational surplus or operational reserves, as is the case for the original budget authorization.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question? Please vote. Motion carried five zero. Item number C. Draft Operating and Capital Reserve Policy. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
So, so it be moved, council approve the operating and capital reserves policy as presented?
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question? Please vote. Motion carried five zero. Item number D. Policy Review Project. Next steps. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. Council, I'd authorize the council authorize, or I'd move that council authorize the repeal of policies and priors, prioritization list of remaining council improved, or council-approved policies as amended in Table One. Amendment excludes policy zero seven seven.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question? Please vote. Motion carried five zero. Item number E. Renewal Offer for Legal Services and Quarterly Reports, twenty twenty-five. Counselor Olson?
Thank you, worship. Uh, council approved the renewal of the legal services agreement with Richard McPhee for a one-year term effective Ju, August one, twenty twenty-five to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, under the same provisions of the existing contract.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question? Please vote. Motion carried five zero. And last item is recruitment of new safety position. No vote. Information? This one's changed a little bit. Go ahead, Counselor Luck, if you've got it.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I'd move council approve staff's proposed enhancements to the recruitment efforts for the safety and emergency position, and that the budget for said position be included within the... It's in the, uh, HR budget in, uh, future budget years.
Thank you. So that was actually moved by Counselor Luck and seconded by Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Thank you. On the question? Thank you. On the question. Please vote. Um, just Deputy Mayor, Counselor Donovan. Deputy Mayor. Beth's okay? Uh, Counselor Donovan said yes. Deputy Mayor Schreier said yes. Motion carried five zero. Item number fourteen, an adjournment. Moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Please vote. Motion carried five zero. Have a good evening, everyone, and we will return to this room in August. So thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of July and the first half of August.